SJC 13526, William Shakir, V. Zoning Board of Appeals of Boston.
Okay, Attorney Alcock, whenever you're ready.
May it please the Court, good morning, Your Honors. Sean Regan on behalf of the appellant, William Shakir. We are here on interlocutory appeal requesting this honorable court vacate the trial court order imposing bond after a finding that the claim was not brought in bad faith. Today, we seek to harmonize the bond provision of the Boston zoning code with that of the state to ensure that good faith abutters have access to justice and are not barred from seeking judicial review of administrative zoning decisions. To do so, the court must decide whether the Boston bond provision is intended as a shield against frivolous and vexatious claims, or whether it may also be used as a sword to cut down meritorious suits.
Counsel, haven't we decided this question already in Damascus?
Damascus was a different question. The question in Damascus was about whether or not the shall language rendered the bond mandatory. It's a little bit different. We believe that the bond provision is a shield.
But doesn't it, I mean, doesn't it say, Damascus says that the discretion should be exercised, quote, "to discourage frivolous and vexatious appeals from the decision of the Boston Board, but not unreasonably prohibit directly or indirectly meritorious appeals." That's the standard, right?
That is the standard, Your Honor, and we believe that a merit, a good faith claim here is being, is having a bond for damages imposed against it, and we believe that's a bar to justice.
I'm just trying to understand, though, what that standard is and how it differs from, you know, bad faith, just...
I don't think that it does differ from bad faith. I think that it should be, there should be a predicate finding of bad faith before a bond could be, should be imposed, just like this court decided in Merengue.
Yeah, but Merengue, Merengue was just interpreting the cost provision, and we said you need basically bad faith, or it needs to be so devoid of merit as to amount to bad faith, right?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. And here, the question is about damages, this cost, the bond provision in Merengue is to secure costs, in Boston, it's to save harmless and indemnify against cost and damages.
And so, given the difference in the language of the statutes that you just quoted, why wouldn't there be a difference in terms of the standard?
Well, one cannot be damaged from a good faith claimant filing a claim. So there would have to be some cause of the potential damages down the line, so the...
Where is that legal principle embodied?
Well, I think the definition...
That you have to have a cause of action in order to be indemnified and held harmless in connection with the bond provision?
I think, I think that comes from the plain language of those words, that a damage is a remedy for a harm caused to one, caused to an individual, and indemnity is to hold someone harmless from the wrongful act or harmful act of another. There has to be at least a negligent act.
And so, in either of those definitions, you did not include a private right of action, sort of a separate claim against the plaintiff. And it seems like your, your argument is really about the, that the defendant needs to have a private right of action or a claim in order to recover damages.
So in this, in the application, in this instance, if we follow it all the way through to the end, let's, let's say that, in this hypothetical only, Mr. Shakir loses, what then happens at the end? We have to assume that, that the defendant, Pure Oasis, would move to have the bond dispersed, and that could only be based on damages. The only potential cause of that damages would have been the filing of a good faith claim under a judicial right, under Section 11 of the Boston zoning code.
Well, isn't it a delay in having to go through the litigation in order to get that which the zoning board has already given it?
But do we recognize the delay of a regulatory, of a regulatory process that was voluntarily entered into to get an exception from the underlying zoning code as a legal harm when someone has a judicial right to challenge that?
Right, and isn't that exactly what's recognized in the context of this bond?
I think the bond, based on the, in the words indemnity and damages, is intended to save and hold harmless from frivolous and vexatious suits, not from good faith suits. So, so without a predicate finding, just like in Merengue where, where cost ultimately could not be awarded in the end, if damages cannot be awarded in the end, nor should a bond be imposed for it at the beginning.
So going back to the words of the statute, it seems like the Boston-specific statute says costs can't be awarded unless there isn't good faith, right?
Yes, Your Honor.
And then Section 17 also has that cost can't be awarded if there isn't good faith. But there's nothing in the Boston statute that says anything about good faith vis-à-vis damages.
Well, I don't think that needs to be explicitly stated. I think that, I think that the legislature knew what they were doing when they put in indemnity and damages because those, those have a plain meaning, that there has to be a wrongful act. So they did not need to place bad faith next to damages because one cannot be damaged by filing a statutory claim in good faith.
You can, you can file a frivolous lawsuit that's not in bad faith, or a vexatious lawsuit that's not in bad faith. It's, you know, you may just be ignorant.
Correct, Your Honor. I think I'm speaking, I'm speaking generally here, but in this specific instance, there's...
If you file, say you file a frivolous lawsuit, you're not, it's not brought in bad faith, but you don't know the law, and you throw in something that's a bad claim, and that delays this project, so that project doesn't go up for two years, so they can't build, they can't occupy, doesn't that cause damage?
I don't know that ignorance of the law rises to the level of frivolity under...
File something that's really stupid and has no legal basis, isn't that a frivolous case even if it's not a claim filed in bad faith?
And there would be, I think there's a, there's a statute for that, to bring that, that claim for frivolous...
There's, there's a statute here that says, I mean Damascus, I don't know exactly where Damascus came up with the frivolous and vexatious language, it relied on an earlier SJC decision, but it seems to be that's the standard.
They relied on Begley, and in Begley, specifically in the dissent, I'm paraphrasing, but the, but in the dissent, he said that while he agrees with the proposition that Boston can be treated separately from the rest of the Commonwealth, he doesn't agree that only Boston should get substantive damages if the claim is frivolous. So it's about, it's about frivol, it is about frivolity.
But Begley says that we're more likely to have these kinds of claims in Boston because of the density and the difficulty of building there. Therefore, it makes sense to have a statute that's perhaps more protective.
Agreed, against frivolous and vexatious claims. So once that finding is there, and I think this is even more evident in that there's no cap to the, to the bond over, over the 25,000 square, 50,000 square foot threshold, over that, the bond's uncapped. So isn't that a deterrent for frivolous and vexatious claims? Not, it's not intended to, to punish someone who brings a claim in good faith to challenge whether or not a claim is administrative whim, which is, which is the purpose. There's no right to zoning relief. There is a right to challenge underlying, to challenge these approvals to ensure that they are not administrative whim. I believe the legislative intent is clear from the statutory construction and the plain meaning of Section 11. They all support this, this common sense approach that we believe the legislature knew what they were doing when they included the words indemnity and damages. Indemnity is generally understood to protect one from the wrongful act of another, and damages do require more than bringing a good faith claim. There has to be a wrongful act or a minimum negligence, there has to be something. One cannot be damaged from a good faith claim.
Sorry, can you just explain the basis for that assertion vis-à-vis the claimed specific damages here? Because assuming, for purposes of your argument, that this is a good faith claim, we have in front of us a whole bunch of claimed damages that actually are arising from the situation from the delay of the building of this project.
Well, though, I don't know that, that delayed damages as part of the regulatory process are, without a, a cause, without a wrongful act, are damages that we recognize in the law. In Merengue, this court said that if, if the, if the legislature intended to include delayed damages, they would say that.
But Merengue is very different because it was a statute that only referred to costs, and this one refers to costs and damages.
The statute that was referenced, that was cited, I think, was it 40R, 45R, referenced delayed damages, and that was made, that was the reference. If, if they, if they intended to include delayed damages or carrying costs, that would, that would be in the statute. Here, it's just damages, which implies that it has to be from a wrongful act. Now, if, if there is a predicate finding...
Doesn't the context of the entire statute suggest that, that the damages have to be from pursuing the claim because it's damages to hold the person harmless from the fact of this lawsuit going forward?
I would invite the conversation about the context of, of Section 11 because that section is about the right of an aggrieved party to bring a claim in court, and damages and indemnity have specific definitions in court, and so I would encourage the court to give those words the plain meaning of the, of the statute in which they're in.
Could you, could you address Rule 65, which is sort of an analogous provision?
Absolutely. I think Damascus makes the analogy that the bond provision should be imposed in a similar way, and at that time, the bond provision had shall language. And so, what the, what the court in Damascus intended was that it should be a discretionary, it should be a discretionary bond, just like the Rule 65 bond is actually discretionary. The, the difference between the two bonds is the extraordinary remedy sought in Rule 65, which is to restrain someone's affirmative action. Here, only the status quo is being maintained while the, the decision of the, of the administrative body is being checked and...
That's an interesting, you raise a point that I was interested in, which is, actually, the administrative body has approved this project going forward. So I recognize that it maintains the status quo in the sense that, you know, nothing's being built, but in a sense, it also alters the status quo because by filing this lawsuit, you get an automatic tacit injunction of the project going forward. If you did not file this lawsuit, the project would be being built, correct?
Well, the administrative body that approved the project, project is a, is a very highly political process in which abutters don't have much, much say. It's a very one-sided process with the...
But you're not challenging the constitutionality of the process. I mean, sticking with the bond, to Justice Dewar's point, the status quo is maintained where the status quo is defined by the action before the litigation, and that action was approval to go ahead with the build.
Understood. I guess I should be more specific in that we are maintaining the, the zoning code as it exists and not allowing an exception to the zoning code to, to move forward without ensuring that it's not administrative whim or arbitrary and capricious, as with many of these political processes.
So your status quo definition would be no deviations from the code as written?
My stat, sure, to, to confirm that the political administrative body that approved it did not violate the standard in doing so, which the abutters don't have much opportunity to challenge during that process, and they do have judicial review under Section 11, which they are attempting to bring, and they should not have to pay to do so if it isn't good faith. Now, if frivolity or bad faith is found, then the, the damages and cost bond can, can be so applied. In closing, the courthouse doors should not be closed to the public. For over 50 years, this court has made great effort to implement bond requirements imposed by the legislature in ways that do not offend the constitutional rights of due process and access to the courts. In Damascus, this court ruled that bonds may be imposed to discourage, discourage frivolous and vexatious appeals, but may not be used to unreasonably prohibit directly or indirectly meritorious appeals. In Merengue, this court reaffirmed that position, and now Shakir removes the space for confusion between the two. Our interpretation is consistent with Merengue and Damascus. It aligns with the plain meaning of damages and indemnity, and most importantly, it ensures that abutters are free to access their right of petition and access the court. The court here has an opportunity to harmonize 40A in the Boston zoning code to ensure good faith claimants with presumptive standing have appropriate remedy of law for zoning appeals in the city of Boston.
Okay, thank you. Attorney McKenna.
Good morning, Your Honors, may it please the Court. My name is Dennis McKenna, and I represent the appellate defendant, Pure Oasis, a minority-owned business here in Boston that holds a license from the Boston Cannabis Board for over two and a half years to operate its cannabis store on Washington Street in the Oak Square Business Section of Brighton. After receiving the license from the Cannabis Board, which also looks at location as one of its several factors in determining among many applicants who would get to operate and where, the Boston Cannabis determined that this was an appropriate location, and then, as is current under the zoning code...
I get it, that you've got a permit, and so what is the standard and how does it, I get that Merengue doesn't control this. What I'm trying to understand is a practical matter, what the standard is and how it differs from bad faith. Because in Merengue, we said it's, it's so devoid of merit that you can, you know, at least infer bad faith. This standard about so vex, you know, vexatious or frivolous, although there's a second part, not to deter meritorious appeals, what is the standard? And, you know, when you're advising your clients, how does it differ, you know, from the 40A standard?
It is designed to discourage, I would say, combining the two words, unmeritorious appeals, but also to afford, so Damascus, but then under, I believe it's, was a judge, to afford bond protection to my client. So it's a two-part...
No, I understand that we're trying to protect your client from something, and it's not bad faith, I don't think, but I'm trying to understand, it's a, it's a somewhat high standard, right?
Which, Your Honor, I'm sorry?
This standard we're applying here, it's not bad faith, but it's not bad, it's not sort of mediocre claims or sort of, you know, poorly thought out, you know, but still there's something to it, claims.
Right, so we both know what the language is, well, we all know what the language is in Damascus. So I would say it from this as somebody who does plenty of this litigation. Even in these, this is an, this is a typical abutter, but this is a business abutter. This is a multifamily person who, while this appeal is pending, is making hundreds of thousands of dollars in rent, while my client...
But again, that's all sort of background music. Is his claim frivolous or vexatious? If it's not, then he gets to bring it, right?
Well, he gets to bring it. We cannot stop it until this...
But he doesn't, you don't get a bond if his, if his lawsuit isn't frivolous or vexatious, right?
Yes, we do, Your Honor. This is to dis...
Certainly don't get costs unless it's bad faith. So what, what is it that you get? And I also agree with your reasoning that damage is not separate, a separate cause of action, but the delay in getting your cannabis operation up and running could be damages. I think that makes some sense, but I, but he's got to have the right to bring a meritorious appeal and something that's not vexatious or frivolous, right?
What will happen, I'm going to put it in the context of this case, what will happen when discovery is over? We will move for summary judgment on standing. This case will likely never get to trial.
I don't know if that's true. He's a neighbor, and you're putting a cannabis operation next to his house.
Understood, Your Honor. So he has presumed standing.
Right. Say you ooze on standing. Help me out here. How is the, what are we, what's the standard?
We will then win, I predict, because the board is given significant deference on a discretionary permit, which this is. We meet all the standards, and the board's discretion is then given discretion by the Superior Court.
His traffic analysis is so flawed that it's frivolous or vexatious?
Yes, Your Honor. He has no traffic expert. He never did, and he still doesn't. And so, these are anecdotal concerns that every neighbor on every project, there was a case called Holland Brands that went through the appeals court. I tried that to the Superior Court. Same exact concerns, that none of the other businesses that operate there successfully, surrounding the same plaintiff's house, the fast food stores, the liquor store right down the street, eventually, not today, we have to get a conditional use permit. Someday soon, these cannabis stores will be regulated the same as liquor stores, meaning the regulations will be at the regulatory level, there will be no conditional use permit.
So his traffic analysis is frivolous, and therefore the bond is appropriate, or...
He, he may have, he may have his own internal concerns, but they're not concerns of his tenants who decided where they would live, that could have lived three blocks over, but decided to live on Washington Street on the bus line next to existing businesses. So it won't be frivolous, but it will be devoid of merit, and so that's why I use the words unmeritorious appeal. Remember, Damascus doesn't say...
But, but you're, you're jumping past the conclusion of the judge, and I know you're going to the end and saying that once this is fully litigated, you'll be vindicated. But the judge has made a finding, right? That, that this appeal was not frivolous.
The judge only said, and that's a, a key distinction of what the plaintiffs argue, when the plaintiff is taking the Superior Court's words, where the Superior Court, when she distinguished the 40A Section 17 and Merengue, she said that she did not find that the plaintiff was acting in bad faith because that was the language of Merengue. What she did not find is that this was a meritorious appeal. There's no finding.
Well, but she has to find that it's vexatious or frivolous, right?
No, no, no. This, not at all, Your Honor. That's not a required finding. It's a purpose, but it's not a required finding. And recall, ultimately, the only question is whether the court properly exercised its broad discretion or whether the court was clearly erroneous. And the court here did exercise a correct amount of discretion, and there's no evidence, none whatsoever, in the records submitted by the plaintiff who had the opportunity to file an affidavit and did. There's not any question, nor statement or evidence, that a $3,500 bond is going to cause this plaintiff to dismiss this appeal, so...
Can, can I ask, we don't read what the judge did, I can't remember if it's a he or she, we can't remember what the judge, she says, I believe, that it's not in bad faith, but we don't know what, that's not good enough, right? Not being in bad faith is not the standard. It's, it's something less than bad faith may still justify a bond. We don't know whether she thought bad faith was the requirement or not.
She is saying that bad faith isn't the requirement because she did not find the plaintiff to be in bad faith, which may look to your heart, but it doesn't look to your question initially, your observation, it could be an ignorant appeal, which, it's a appeal devoid of merit, and that's what we believe it to be.
Wait, how do we know she applied the correct standard? That's what, by saying it's not the wrong standard, how do we know she applied the right standard?
Well, we know she exercised the correct amount of discretion because she said, when she entered this, "I'm not going to award a $25,000 bond, I'm going to award a $3,500 bond," and that affords us the protection that, under Damascus and related cases, we are entitled to. It, it has the plaintiff put just a little bit of skin in the game and nothing close to the hundreds of thousands of dollars of losses we're suffering and...
So some of those losses that you claim to be suffering are, are, quote, "losses that you would suffer even if you had to go forward," like having to insure the property and things like that. So how do we treat those? Isn't really your damages to be indemnified here, the lost profits maybe that you would have gotten if you were allowed to go forward?
They are delayed damages because we...
Well, which is "they"? Can you be more specific with the pronoun?
All of them, all of them are delayed damages, everything that we put in the affidavit.
That's just not true because some of them are things that you would have had to pay anyway.
We would have, but we would have been operating, so because we are paying them while not operating, that's when they become damages to us.
That's just not true because you would have had to pay them if you were operating. So really, your delay damages is the differential.
Well, at least, Your Honor, under, I, we differ on whether we're being damaged by paying real estate taxes when we don't get the benefit of operating, but I'll concede that you can see things differently.
Right, and so you're paying the real estate taxes without the benefits, so your damages are the differential. You were going to pay the real estate taxes anyway.
Overhead is overhead, you can't avoid it.
Right, so some of the things that you put into your, you know, damages calculation in connection with asking for the bond are just not true.
Well, they're true in that we're paying them, we can differ on...
But you would have to pay them anyway.
I concede it.
Okay, thank you.
I concede it. What we will never get back are the profits.
Profits, yeah.
And that is hundreds of times more than the $3,500 bond. Your Honors, we believe and request that you affirm the Superior Court order because it was within the, the broad discretion that the Superior Court had. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Attorney Jones.
Good morning, Your Honors, may it please the Court. I'm Catherine Obishon Jones on behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeal and its members. Zoning in Boston has long been regulated separately from the zoning in the rest of the Commonwealth. The language contained in Section 17 of 40A and Section 11 of the Enabling Act is not nearly identical. Boston's bond provision, Section 11, in the state...
So tell me how, I understand it's not identical. What I can't figure out is how it differs exactly. It doesn't require bad faith, but I'm not sure the difference between bad faith and vexatious and frivolous in a meaningful, give me, if I were advising a client, what's the difference? What kind of case, what kind of claim falls within the bond provision in Boston that doesn't fall within the one in 40A, in Worcester or somewhere else?
Your Honor, I believe that that goes to things like delayed damages, which in the Merengue...
That's, that's the amount. I'm trying to understand what the type of claim is, that, I understand we look at the amount, and that affects, you know, the ability to proceed, but there's got to be a substantive difference in these standards, and I'm trying to get a sense of what it is.
And I...
And you're the best one to tell us that because you're, you know, you're from, you're, you're coming from this. Tell me how you differ from Worcester.
So Boston is, like I said, Boston's been Enabling Act and the State Zoning Act are different and have been since as long as they've existed, and these...
We get that, but how do they differ?
So Boston differs in population size, density, that zoning...
No, no, I understand, I understand how Boston is different from the rest of the Commonwealth. What I don't understand is how the legal standard differs.
Your Honor, the, the court has... Your Honor, the, the court has many times determined that because of the differences between Boston and the rest of the Commonwealth, it is a, the legislature is reasonable in making these sorts of differences in the statutes. The practical differences in the two, including the damages and costs versus just costs, and including the different caps on the amount that bonds can be imposed at, are a reflection of those differences.
Okay, but I get it. So you can get damages as well as costs, but you're not saying that the same substantive standard, the bad faith standard applies to both, and you can just get more, right?
No, the bad faith standard does not apply to both.
Right.
And in theory, yes, they could get more.
I get that they can get more, that you have damages and costs in Boston, they only have costs. But I think you're arguing that it's, there's a difference in the substantive standard, do or you not?
Yes, there is, and, and the, the bond standard in, in Boston, Your Honor, is, first of all, it's not a requirement for people to post a bond in order to file under the Enabling Act. It's only done through motion practice, it's not done every time, and then as has been discussed...
You've got to help us on the hard question. The hard question is, is it something less than bad faith? I take it you're arguing, but I don't know that, I'm trying to understand the difference between vexatious and frivolous, and maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like the substantive standard is the difference between vexatious and frivolous and bad faith.
Your Honor, we would submit that vexatious and frivolous is something different than bad faith, and that the...
So help me, how does it differ? Give us some examples of how it differs.
I, I think Your Honor's point earlier, that there can be a scenario in which, you know, maybe an abutter is ignorant of exactly what is required to bring a complaint under Section 11, that results in the, in most cases, developer winning the appeal, is a, is a great example of that. And in that case, the position is that the defendant in that scenario should be indemnified against damages that may be the result of the delay caused by the litigation.
But I'm having a little trouble though because, again, in Merengue, we said, we didn't, we're using sort of the merit, the lack of merit in the claim to show bad faith, so devoid of merit as to be indicative, or whatever the language was, of bad faith. Here, we're not requiring bad faith, but we're also making a merits determination, right?
Yeah, well, the, the judge, Your Honor, is weighing those two considerations as outlined in Damascus, and, and the most important point is that the legislature doesn't require a bad faith, require, a bad faith finding, like the court has determined that...
Does the second part of Merengue change, I mean of Damascus, change the first part? The first part of Merengue is the vexatious and frivolous, and then it talks about not interfering with meritorious appeals. Does that soften the vexatious and frivolous requirement?
I think it may, Your Honor, and depending on the claim that's being brought and the judge's discretion. And to that point, I think it's also worth noting that, to the extent there might be an error in discretion, that doesn't necessarily mean that we can read a bad faith requirement into the, into the Enabling Act. And if there are no further questions. On the basis of the plain language reading of Section 11, the Board of Appeal and its members respectfully request that the court finds that the courts may impose a bond absent a finding of bad faith.